Good morning, everyone. This beautiful fall day, is it? Fall year? Officially fall?
Um, yeah, October twenty first.
Beautiful day, last couple of days. So I guess it's gonna change abruptly come the weekend, so. High in the forty, so enjoy it, get out and enjoy it anyway. And welcome here today to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, October twenty fourth. With me today, Don Schwenker, Nettie Legel, myself, Mike Stanis are your county supervisors. Lisa's our county auditor, Bjorn's IT director, Luanne is our executive assistant. Mary is here from the media. First up on our agenda today was the Mr. Todd Kennedy, our Jackson County meeting here. Good morning.
Good morning.
You just made the bell.
Yes. Uh, does it have a uh, working right away permit from a Coca Valley to extend service with overhead? Don't see any issue with it on three hundred thirty fifth Avenue. When I decide everything is okay? Yeah, it's overhead, yeah.
Height is a good for our boxers all love.
They don't have the height on the permits.
Do they attach them to on your poles, right? I mean their poles, right?
Yeah, I don't know. They uh, it's coming off uh, it's thirteen hundred sixty five feet.
Is this crossing the road?
It crosses from the existing pole, the little yellow thing, this is what they send, and then the blue is all new, that's just goes, so it crosses once. Uh, it just has the offset from center line. For the poles, doesn't have the height. And I can find about the crossing height, but our permit doesn't specify the crossing height, so I don't know if we technically, they probably have to meet a minimum, but I don't know if we have, I don't, that's like state law or not, who controls the height of that?
I would imagine it's more than one. I mean, yeah, I mean, some might be restricted to height, but I'm sure theirs is probably eighteen, sixteen, eighteen feet.
Their box is up and stuff.
I mean, I know your commies are a lot taller than your semis, but. Somebody did. Physically look at.
Yeah, they don't send us like cut sheets of like the pole heights and the mast arm lengths and all that, we don't get that much information, so. I can check with McCoka and see what they have for install heights, but I guess it probably depends on the type of service too, so I think the higher the foliage or KVA, the higher the lines are and everything too, I think so. But these probably, I don't know, like I said, I don't know if these are three facing, that information is not here, so.
Recommended for approval?
Yeah. Did you get that question? Oh, it is single phase overhead. I mean, I call them and ask them what their crossing height is. Well, I mean, I'd like to know, make sure it's high enough, but I'm assuming McCoca Valley has placed plenty of things across the road. There has to be some kind of stipulation, I guess I'd just be, is this our permit, or is this a state permit? It's a, it's a Clinton, or excuse me, Jackson County working right away, this is a permit for them to work in our right away.
So, just to work in our right away, it's not nothing to really do with the height of the wire or anything, you're just saying they can work in the thirty three percent.
It's, there's state requirements for like, if they're bearing electric or gas, they have requirements they have to meet for the state utility board. So they have their own installation requirements.
Right.
All the franchise utilities have to meet the uh, the utility board requirements.
All you're doing is giving them permission to dig a hole in our right away.
Well, or work in our right away.
Put their trucks.
Attached to the pole. I would make a motion to approve. Well, I'll find out what their, what that is, I don't know that. I don't know what the utility board has for install requirements for overhead.
I mean, it'd be just good info to keep having back of our head, I guess.
Well, in that way, yeah.
Out of my wallet, but in your.
I don't know how we would check it.
Well, soon as somebody, well, soon as somebody, you know, you'll check it.
Did you climb the pole?
No, when you're hooking it with the box, they're gonna know it's too low.
That's too late. That's too late.
I'm just trying to say what's.
But if they come to the picture right away. Yeah, oh.
Repair it.
Part of it too is like, you know, I don't know if they go by like the, the actual mounting height or like, cause they're sagging. So like, they may have height mounted at sixteen, but by the time it sags in the middle of the road, it could be down to fifteen or forty.
Your pole length six inches is gonna make quite a difference in the middle.
Yeah.
I'll second it.
I have a motion of seconds to approve the underground, or not underground, or the McCoca Valley co-op permit overhead line as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
I said you're kinda struggled with that. Alright.
Okay, um.
I started reading the document.
Next item is uh, the uh, manion superintendent position, so we completed our interviews on Friday. The interview team discussed the applicants and your view for case three, everything, and then we uh, made an offer to an internal applicant. Uh, that applicant has verbally approved the offer, I don't think Becky has the written offer signed yet, but it's uh, I was hoping she was gonna be in here, but.
Oh, Michael Buzzer, I just seen a local or individual walk down the hall.
He was coming in at nine to talk about some uh, of the insurance and the crossover between uh, what's the union policy going to the, he had some questions. Yeah, yeah, so really I'm just looking for a motion to approve the hire, and then that sets the ball rolling so we can post his leave-in position internally. And then we get the, find out where the opening is gonna be, because we're, we got an opening right now, but we're trying to fill, and we're gonna have another one. You know, based on this hire, so.
So I would approve the hire, but I would kinda like, if I did that, I would also kinda like to disclose who the hire is, if that's
Well, that's.
Possible, not, then we'll.
They come in?
Yes.
And, you know, with that being.
See, that's to be determined. It all depends on when, like, how much
For the insurance.
Di- double paying, like, where he's paying on union and thing. There's the lady.
Becky Chapin, our human.
Come on up.
Director. Let's see, guys. Has joined us, good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
So Todd was saying that we've had come to a conclusion of who the new hire would be for the road superintendent. And at this time, we're asking you if you have the documentation that's needed so we could disclose his name.
Correct, yes.
Would you like to say to you later?
Sure, it's uh, our department's longtime leadman, Rick Kilburg, is the uh, person that was selected to fill the position, so.
I would just like to add to that, that we had some really good applicants, and I wanna thank them for, you know, taking the time to take us into consideration also.
Well, I, I will put my two cents into that too, I was very impressed with the quality of the internal applicants, as well as the external applicants that applied for this position. To the point of being a little bit jealous. But, no, it was, it was.
You're saying Jackson County is a bunch better place to live than Clinton County?
Maybe at least a work.
Wait, go ahead, sack out.
I'd say at least the workout of full-time agent. No, but it was, it was, I mean, you guys, we had a really good, quality group of applicants, and that's that's been well, I guess.
Yeah, from other counties also, so, yeah.
Just to clarify, Becky, what's the start date?
So November first?
Okay.
It is November first?
Well, I texted, but I didn't get done with until right then.
Well, they're.
So then I reached out.
Rattle my cage to come over here right.
Time to start.
I would make a motion to approve the hire of Rick Kilburg.
I'll second that.
Motion to second to approve the hire of Rick Kilburg as our Jackson County Road Superintendent?
Yeah, so my question is, do they, do they need to do anything else as far as the minutes to approve and authorize payroll or?
Yeah. Did you guys already talk about that?
No. So, so should we just approve the hiring right now?
Unless there's a motion, I would go ahead and then approve it.
Salary sever.
But do I need to reward it? Oh, you're good.
If you wanna wait on the motion, we can talk about salary quick, and you can do it all in one, otherwise you can go ahead and.
I take it back.
Resent, motion is rescinded?
Okay.
It wasn't voted on, so it dropped.
Okay.
Okay, so the salary we negotiated was uh, seventy eight thousand. And then after a six-month probation, he would move to eighty thousand.
Which is current?
Which is a, uh, yes.
Change difference from what the current calculation is, but, and we had advertised from seventy one to eighty one, so we kinda worked within his experience qualifications and where we pay now and.
Well, you know, he's been a good employee for a long time, so, um, certainly deserves a chance to step forward, so. So how, what do you need to include it in Don's motion? Could we catch them both with one motion?
Yes, it's a bait that you approve the hiring of Rick Kilburg.
That's stated salary.
November first at seventy eight thousand initial salary, moving to eighty thousand after six months. I make that motion.
I'll second that.
I have a motion of seconds for the hiring of Rick Kilburg for the job posted and for the salary presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Congratulations.
And.
And then as a follow-up to that, do you guys need to approve like posting of his position now or not, or would you do that?
How are we gonna?
Does that go internal first?
Yes.
For time period?
Yes.
Um, can we, can we do that if it's not on the agenda, or I would like to move forward with it, yes?
I don't know, I can't remember if you guys typically do that or not when there's an opening.
They, they typically do, but I'm not sure why. I mean, like, the departments are authorized with wherever your twenty five or twenty six people are, so once those positions become vacant, the next process is to, historically, we have committed ask for. I mean, the sal- the, the salary for these are union, they are set, there's no negotiating, there's no asking, it's just, we go through the process of rearranging or given the opportunity of the internal road guys to move shops, get them to leave their position.
So basically, you're informing us that you're gonna put it out there.
Yeah, so now we have, now we have a vacancy within the union that we need to post.
Are we posting them like separately?
Hmm, the other, the great jobs are already posted and out, we're receiving ads, so this one.
What I'm saying for Rick's job.
Them separately, what do you mean plural?
As far as leadman and a truck. Like, are you posting it as a Springbrook truck lead, or are you posting it as a Springbrook truck? And a lead guy?
It's one position.
So this one's.
His position's gonna get.
So if, if, but if AKA, somebody from that district wants it, that's already in a truck, then they have to move to Springbrook?
Yes. So the position is, the location is not gonna change, they uh, will have to drive a truck, it'll be part of this position, and or they will be the leader.
The same way you did with bearish, correct? I mean, we had a guy come from a different shop.
Yeah, so it'll be, it'll be posted in the current location.
So if the Sterling truck guy wants it, he has to go to Springbrook.
That's true.
Cause their, the leads are actually covering each district.
Right, but Sterling would be in that district.
Yeah, we're not moving the leadman around to wherever the truck driver is. I, I mean, I don't see why.
We historically have not done, we have historically have not moved the lead position shop locations.
I think we have within the district. Long as it stays in the district.
Yeah, I'll check with what, what we've done historically, but whatever we do, I want.
I don't know that it matters, I'm just saying.
Yeah, whatever we do, I wanna be consistent, so if we have, if for the most part, we have posted the lead-in position out of a certain shed predominantly, that's what we're gonna do. I just, I'll be, I'll be consistent with what we've done historically.
So that said, normally is centrally located in that district or somewhat centrally located.
I guess that would be the thought basis, but. If, if there's variation to where we post it, um, depending on who bids it, uh, and we've done that in the past, I will post it that way with a variable shop location, but it has to be within that district obviously.
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, you don't want it to go up to Butler. Type of deal when that's not in the district, but.
So I'll post it, I'll post it basically how we've done it historically, so.
Okay. Any other good news?
And then we're gonna move him into this role, like he'll start fulfilling this role right away, either though, even though technically he's not officially titled until November first, he's gonna start becoming the.
Is he gonna shadow Rog, or is he gonna kinda?
When Roger's here, yes, that's intense, but Roger has the limited boots on the ground that he's left, so. Think he's done November seventh, alright? Will you let us know or send an email out to us letting us know how you're gonna post that, whether it can move within the district or if it has. Yeah, if you guys wanna know, yeah, I'm just curious.
I know we did have some issues with one of our roads, our week nine roads, uh, seventeenth avenue, is it?
Street.
Street. Anyway, I just wanna let you know and your crew know that I've had a couple really nice emails from individuals that were rather irate with that road, which they had good reason to be, by the way. But it has extensive improvement, they were happy with the improvement and um, going forward, they understand you know, the situation, bad timing with the rain, and um, can't control your mother nature, so. You know, it was a little frustrating for him at the time, I suppose, but they definitely understand now, and uh, they're happy with the reconstruction and wait it's gone.
Good, yeah, that's good. And we did spend quite a bit of time trying to get it back to acceptable condition, so.
Appreciate it.
Alright, cool, any others?
Thanks, Becky, thank you, Todd. Do we have any visitors or citizens with us today that would like to address the board, via Zoom or in person? Hearing or seeing none, we will, we wanted to Julie Fern, our drug free communities project coordinator.
The opioid settlement requests are really kind of tangent to that position, and that's what we're here about today. There are two requests that I believe I sent to Luanne and were given to you. Um, the first one I'm looking at is from hospice, signed by Rayanne Cady, um, for the drug disposal bags, you know, help patients get rid of medications, uh, we talked a lot about, you know, um, liquid morphine injectable is used in end of life, and that is highly abused. People's houses have been broken into to get it, and we wanna be able to get rid of that as quick as possible. And so that request is for nine hundred and ten dollars.
So, well, I guess it was signed by Rayanne, I'll tell you something.
Oh.
Very interesting.
Very interesting.
I forgot to sign.
Yeah.
Okay, I will sign it.
Okay, so, and, and the purpose for that is to make sure that you validated that you're asking under the appropriate categories, so for other purposes.
And this one's very clear, G four is medication disposal programs.
Yeah.
I mean, so that was real tight.
I gotta run that by me again, what, what did they do previously?
They, we got, um, we had a federal source of getting disposal bags, and so I've been providing them to them, that source dried up.
So before that, what did we do?
We didn't have them, and we had morphine in people's houses, we had morphine being driven around by family members. Um, it was a bad deal, so we fixed it with bags, and now the bags, we don't have any.
So this is the, and this might sound, I don't mean to sound this insensitive or whatever, but this isn't like a billable thing that hospice gets reimbursed or whatever, this is just.
No, and you know, if you're really following the law, driving our other people's medications, especially like your narcotics, is not, I mean, it shouldn't be happening, nurses should not be grabbing our loads of medication and driving them, some families should be getting rid of them, you know, as quickly as possible, whoever is their power of attorney for healthcare should really be the one person handling them. If we're following the law.
So you're handing these bags out to families to, to put their stuff in?
Yes. And it, um, it's a charcoal, it looks like ground up charcoal, it's a carpet.
None, you think? I mean, they're using them for the right purpose and.
Oh, I feel confident hospice uses them for the right purpose.
Is it re- repeat, so hospice are the only ones that are using them?
We're requesting, we had some other people using them in limited um, reasons. We have encouraged them to use the drop boxes, this is a very specific to hospice request.
Okay, that, that makes a whole lot of difference to know that hospice, you know, lets their, just provide a really good service, and they're taking care of it, and it that you just say, hand it them out to individuals, say, hey, put your stuff in here.
We had given some to funeral homes, um, who had dispensed them, but they now have a sheet to just refer people to the seven, hopefully eight drop boxes when the jail opens. But we had given some to the, to the funeral homes, cause people have come in with all these meds.
And is this again, not to sound insensitive, but is hospice any way, shape or form of looking at funding for this for themselves, or are they constantly going to?
Well, no, but constantly, this should last them a year, um, the two hundred, that should be a year.
Six months.
Um, their number here a little down right now, so at the current level, it'd probably be closer to a year, I mean, if they get busy, which we don't want, but it does happen, then they won't last as long.
So I'd like to make sure that this is not something that they're gonna depend on in the future, every time they come around, that they do apply for uh, funding if it's available for them.
If there's other funding?
Yeah.
And we're always looking, um, because you know, if I could get some to hand out through another source, I would do it as part of my job.
Right.
We have not found that, um, and this became the biggest need area where it felt like it was a deficit that we weren't meeting.
Are the medium bags the most used bag?
Yeah, forty, it holds about forty-five pills, um, six liquid ounces, which the morphine, when it's injectable, it's a very small bottle, so that would hold it, um.
I guess that I also read it here somewhere that they're, um, dispose of their.
Why didn't go, sorry?
Yeah.
The whole thing is biodegradable, even the bag.
Biodegradable, that's what I'm talking for, so the medication, how could the medication be biodegradable?
It's, it's a carbon chemical reaction, I'm not a chemist.
It diffuses.
It actually deactivates the medication and makes it inert.
Inert.
Inert, yeah, cause there's some other kind of brands out there that make it unretrievable.
Yeah.
And then the whole thing's a plastic bag in the garbage, these cost about forty-two cents a piece more, but it's inactive and inert and biodegradable, so we went with these.
You got it.
Did you repeat your reference? I would, I, I would like for you to sign these before we.
Yeah, that was my error.
Um, I make a motion to approve it.
I'll second that.
So motion to second to approve the opioid request from a hospice of Jackson County, as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
The second one actually was initiated by Martin Sign Met at the Jackson County Sheriff's Office, and then the um, McCoca Police Department. And the sheriff's office then, when they heard about it, wanted in too.
Okay.
Um, so the Narcan, well, that's the brand name, naloxone is the um, overdose reversal medication. It is temperature sensitive, and so our officers, um, some departments have chosen to do pouches on their vests, um, to carry it. McCoca and the sheriff's department are more belt people, so it doesn't really work, so they were asking for these Pelican boxes that would keep it safe, accessible, and help control temperature.
Well, I don't know how the temperature thing works if it's sitting in the trunk, and the trunk is outside, cause the trunk is not heated.
I, and I totally understand that, this is the request they made, and I kinda.
It's not signed.
No, and I wasn't.
When I send outside, it's not even assigned, why is it a request?
Cause you. Um, I must have scanned the wrong one, it was signed.
That's just. The one we got, so, I invited, mostly we tabled this?
We tabled this, yeah, it was signed, I must, I had the original, I'm, I'm, okay, it's on my desk, I had the signed copy.
I guess I have some questions about that also, how big are these boxes?
About twelve by twelve.
So, by the money, equipment they got in them cars now, I, I don't know how big a pouch this medication comes in. I'd like to say, it should be readily accessible rather than to try to find a box and something else that's taking up space. Uh, I, I'd like the idea of on the vest thing, but if you said that don't work for him, I, you know.
I encourage that, cause that's what Bellevue and Chief Nixon and Sevila went with, um, and we were able to access pouches at no cost. So.
That's a great idea, by the way.
But if.
Well, I.
We don't under- you know.
Do these pouches come with a belt, no belt? They're belted.
They do, but I've been told the belts are very full, and it's about that big. Um.
I, 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 I look at, if we could do the pouches, and they could throw it in the glove box, cause I know their cars when they're outside during, on the couch, that, they're running. They're always warm, it's more of a climate-controlled environment type of thing, um, I'm just, these.
I know that they will not keep it, because we have that issue at the hospital.
They will not keep one.
The temperature wise.
So, um, if Chief Diamond is really passionate about it, I will invite him to come back with me.
Yeah.
That'll be good.
I mean, these boxes look like me, like you should put somebody's heart or something in it to transport. I think they're indestructible.
They are very indestructible boxes, but they're not necessarily, I mean.
The ones he wanted were bright, it's the bright orange, um, I.
Which makes them.
Don't have color ink right now.
Easily seeable, I get that part, but again, when you need this.
You got to unbox the box.
You gotta, you gotta go and find the box, you gotta.
And when, when you look at the justification, what is H one?
Mm-hmm.
And I look back here.
And it's in the back part, it's not.
It will be, and my question was schedule, is, wasn't, if I remember right, wasn't there so much money, had the percentage of the money had to be paid?
Seventy-five percent covered scheduling. Minimum, it can be more.
Okay, and no more than twenty-five percent paid coverage of schedule B. The training and stuff that we approved through the high schools is also schedule B, correct?
No, that's all A.
Okay, okay.
So everything, you can look at what we spent, this is less than twenty-five total, if you took the three that you already approved and add, and just those three, this is less than twenty.
So under, um, schedule B, H one, it says to increase availability, distribution of naloxone and other drugs to treat overdoses for first responders, overdose patients, individuals with OUDs and their friends, family, schools, community navigators, outreach workers, persons being released from jail, prison, or other members of the general public. I don't know how a box controlling the temperature does that for her purposes.
This, Brendan, and we did chalk about it quite a bit, that it makes it of, that they will have it, it'll be, you know, bright orange, they can find it, and it, if it's temperature controlled, then it's a usable, accessible product that they will have with them.
Yeah.
And police or first responders, that's where they fell in that list.
As, like you say, as Nettie was stating, that, that in the trunk, it doesn't control temperature.
Even in, even in the squad car, if it's turned off, it's not gonna.
The squad cars are more on, because, you know, but the deputies, they take theirs home, and it sits for the shift, they're not working. So that's a whole different ballgame than the police where they have three or four, or whatever they have, and they are used every shift, I mean, that's a whole different situation.
Yeah.
Um.
Those are questions we have to make it past monster with the auditors.
So I will invite, if he wants to represent, otherwise, and I, we can get them, the ASAT can get the pouches. Um, that's easy, we have a source for those, and we're happy to do it, so we gave ten to Bellevue, we gave a couple to Sevila, and Chief Gruber, I haven't heard from yet, we can get him some if he wants them. I just haven't heard from him yet.
Just to me, that would be a question, it's like, couldn't you put the pouch in the glove box if you don't wanna wear it on the belt? Because the glove box is inside the cabinet of the car, inside the passenger compartment, that is heated, that is climate controlled, that is everything, so if the cars are used all ship, they're never really cold, would that be a more.
For the police, yeah, not for the deputies that were.
Right.
You've already purchased, did I understand you purchased some for those departments?
I haven't purchased, no.
No.
They got the pouches, I'm saying.
We didn't buy them, the state, they were available through a state program, and I just made a request and they mailed them to us. We didn't pay for them.
Oh, okay.
They came out of state opioid dollars.
Okay, give some more of them.
Yeah, I can give it, yeah. And I, I did offer, and I said, no, having it on your person, if you want it to be really available, right here is your best spot.
I would agree, yeah.
But not, they all don't do vests, and they still do belts, and they said their belts are full, and I don't wanna, you know, and I don't wanna throw Joel under the bus, but we're talking about the gloves, where are they, where to put them, that we bought. There's a space issue with the belts and everything.
Okay, yeah.
Well, some belts are bigger.
That they are.
What's that supposed to mean?
Um.
Yeah, we just talked about that last.
But yeah, but even the new gloves that were purchased, where to put them, and so they're not on him, because it's a space issue.
Right.
So how much more can we put on these belts, I guess does become a question.
Well, I think I made a motion to the.
We're gonna table it anyhow, because we need the.
Yeah, and I will take it back to Chief Simon and say, hey, this was the discussion, and if you wanna come present it and argue your point, we'll get back on the agenda.
Not that, and it's not that we're not for them having this stuff, but I just definitely, they are not a climate-controlled box, I do know that for a fact.
So, and I will sign the one that you approved, cause yeah, that one, it's a clean, it's super clean.
She hasn't.
Yeah, I will sign it. Sorry, it's been pretty couple weeks.
And do you?
And sorry, Mark.
Thank you.
I will have you sign it off.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was making sure.
And so, do we actually even need a motion, or we just kinda drop discussion on it? Cause I have a motion, but I don't have a second, I think.
Oh, I'll second, that we paid for the one that is.
Yeah, motion of second to table the, um, Pelican boxes as presented, all those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
You're back.
You want that back now?
No.
Oh, you keep that source, thanks.
Thank you, Drew.
And, so, right on time is Brianna Kirk, our Jackson County Veterans Paris. What's the last words for you, director?
Administrator.
Administrator.
Add that on here.
Yeah, you gotta add that on here, because some are directors, some are chief.
You gotta be the veteran, be the director.
Yes, behind Brianna's name, add administrator when she presents, please.
Oh, okay.
Administrator.
Good morning.
Thanks. Alright, and in September, we filed a total of nineteen claims, eleven of those were newer supplemental, DIC, healthcare, or burial claims. In September, we filed a total of nineteen claims, eleven of those were newer supplemental, D I C, healthcare or burial claims. Eight were either supporting documentation, requested information, or intent files. We only have nine claims that were decided, so that leaves our ending at ninety-three open claims for Jackson County. Um the most recent numbers released are from the month of September. We had three hundred ninety-four Jackson County families receive a total of six hundred ninety-eight thousand, three hundred sixty-eight dollars in compensation, pension, or D I C. This is an overall increase of five thousand four hundred eighty-eight dollars since August of this year. Uh Lucy received her PIP card on Friday, so she can now access veteran files, so she can get in and answer questions when people call much more efficiently. We have finalized our home base Iowa incentives and I attached the policy and application for you guys. Um just to review. We're probably not gonna release them to the public until we're got the signs hung in the dedication ceremony over with. So then, once we do place the signs and we do the dedication ceremony, we'll accept the applications and they'll come directly to my office. Um and we'll go over those. And then the Jackson County Economic Alliance Board did um fund ten thousand dollars in seed money towards Home Base Iowa. Um so the checks will be written from Home Base, or from the Economic Alliance. I believe we just wanna thank the Jackson County, Jackson County Economic Alliance Board for that seed money to get us up and running as a home base Iowa community.
Be a nice gesture on their part, we're gonna. Hope you guys get it going and stuff. I think we uh come up with a couple of, there was lots of ideas floating around, but I think we've limited the scope and scale. To kinda get it up and running and to make sure to see, test the waters, so to speak, and it can be expounded on from there.
Sure, we can always add other incentives later on down the road.
People are coming in and maybe.
Just meet needs that way.
I I mean, to me, that's a, that's a really nice number per month. Um I don't know what it compares to from a year ago, but you said it's an increase of five thousand dollars.
Yeah, I'm not sure what it was, it was fine last year.
Well, yeah, no, I mean, it's interesting, but I I to me, that sounds like a nice number, you know, that's coming back to Jackson County, um Jackson County residents and. And I would guess that a lot of it's getting expected in Jackson County.
I hope so.
But anyway, well, we sure appreciate that, Brianna.
Absolutely.
Must be flipping a little bit, I didn't get any of the great big calls that were bragging you. I appreciate what you're doing.
Yes, absolutely. All right, thank you, guys.
I see Deb was back, I stopped there one day. See, so, yeah, no, I got an excuse, right? Hi, not seeing any other individuals here yet. Lisa, would you like to present?
Sure, this morning I need a motion to approve the minutes of the October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three board proceedings. As written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication of the official newspapers.
I have a motion and second to approve the um. Publication of the minutes in the local newspaper, where did your? Agenda go? Uh for the October seventeenth board proceedings, has had, all those in favor, say aye. Hold the same side? Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue the warrants of the publication of the claims listing in the amount of one million, two hundred and seventy-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty-six cents.
Motion second to approve the claims in the amount of one million, two hundred and seventy-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty-six cents as presented. With the note that there was a large amount of um bills paid to our new law enforcement center. Uh to the tune of eight to nine hundred thousand dollars, so that is progressing nicely. So just.
We made a lot of quarterly payments this time, too.
Yeah, so just a note on that. So anyway, all in favor, say aye. I oppose, same sign, motion carried.
Motion needs to accept and place on file the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes of the August ninth, twenty twenty-three meeting.
Motion second to place on file the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes from August ninth of twenty-three meeting, all those in favor, say aye. I oppose, same sign, motion carried.
All that I have for the board today, thank you.
Thank you very much. And Luann? You'd like to keep it rolling?
What's the statement, I don't know, we did stay with that, the claims being high in post because of the.
Too many of them printed, we just need one that way.
I started printing myself a little bit bigger print so I could see it from a distance, but just so. Okay, calendar this week. Um one o'clock this afternoon is the REAP assembly. Um it'll be interviewed this time, it's an annual meeting and it's always the board chairperson that's representative at that meeting, so Michael will be going to that. Six thirty tonight is the Cocon River Watershed Management Authority's annual meeting in Monticello for Don. Um tomorrow, Wednesday, October twenty-fifth at nine AM is iris meeting in Dubuque or by Zoom for Nin. And at seven o'clock that night is a Jackson County EMS Association meeting in Bellevue for. Any of you that want to go, I think Mike and Nin usually try to make that. Thursday, October twenty-sixth at nine AM is the RPA meeting in Dubuque for Don and Nin. I think you can also do that by Zoom. Um at noon that day is Bellevue Leadership Committee meeting by Zoom for Mike. And at one o'clock that afternoon, um the board will have a special meeting on personnel. Um discussion possible action on employee evaluation, possible closed session um per Iowa code. Twenty-one point five. One I, I'm not sure how to read that, anyway. Okay, um the next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, October thirty-first at nine AM. And right after the meeting, the time is yet to be determined, we will have a union negotiation strategy meeting with human resources and the county engineer. And that will be closed to the public. I think that's all the business that I have for you today.
Then I will be there Thursday if I might, I may zoom in, I got a dental appointment, so. I might listen in, but I probably won't be able to speak.
Wednesday?
Or Wednesday, yes, I'm sorry.
We talked about we're having this at that time, but we didn't. The special meeting.
We'll figure it out, okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
That's wonderful, they just turned on the fan.
Get a little bit here, it's cool, nice. So again, uh our next appointment would be Nathan Jones, our Jackson County Contamination Director. And Jeanie Collins here, our Jackson County Weed Commissioner, good morning. So you decide who wants to go first or last or together?
Maybe we'll get Jeannie out of here so she can get back if you wanna. You just need to get your. Commission report, um which they have, right?
So has it been? Any red flags that we need to?
No, I just.
Is there a base of weeds under control?
No, I don't think that's ever gonna be the case, but. It's a work in progress, certainly, but.
Well, I have seen some uh instances or spots that were sprayed, you can tell they were sprayed.
Did some brush control on roadside and. The, I think I only had two uh. Complaints this year, um one was dealt with and one uh. Unfounded.
Is there anything you would do different in the weed program or Jackson County?
We're actually talking about a little bit with secondary roads, you know, talking about maybe start some type of program, and we talked about it before when, when you were hired, of course, or. Took over this position, um. Yeah, I mean, I guess it's one of them things you can't drive the road, down the road with a pickup and a sprayer and try to expect to hit everything, so. It's either right, either have to be a program that's gonna be funded somehow, somehow. You know, to really get ahead of it, I mean, is there, is there uh places you're picking shoes that you spray because of?
There is, sometimes it's the type of weed, if I think it's more invasive, um I'll try to hit that or. If I think it's a heavier infestation than other areas, I'll work on those areas.
Is it the wild cucumber or whatever the farmers are finding that's kinda getting out in the.
That and feel blindly to will spread, but wild cucumbers.
Yeah, and it's pretty bad.
Yeah, I saw it down along the river bottom the other day, it was just choking everything out.
And the river would be an ideal spreader of it.
So, yeah, I I I've seen it in a spot and I've seen some pictures of. Combines that when it grabs it, it sucks the whole field into the combine and doesn't do it any good.
Nope, so all we had to do is approve your report that goes to the state, is that it? Or is it just on file here?
Is there anything else that we can do? I see um you got X amount of gallons of garland and.
I can just get back to my original question, if you're anything that the weed program would have, that you would do different.
Or a problem area you see coming up, I guess.
Maybe growth with equipment down the road, I mean, right now, I'm just. Running a ha- hand sprayer, doing it and. Some areas might be a little easier to run, cover more area with broadcast.
Yeah, so it was before me, I think it has some type of spraying program and then all of a sudden, um. You're killing grandma's rose bushes and you're killing somebody's soybeans and that doesn't work very well, so.
Yep, and that's a concern, and a lot of times I won't. Hit that area that year because there's soybeans behind it, so I'll wait till they do a corn rotation and. I've tried to do that some, so I'm not, you know, moving that chemical onto the soybeans.
So you want like a, you say you wanna progress with equipment from a hand sprayer to like something that can attach to a four weaver or?
We have a new, we bought a new sprayer.
It's a wand though. It's, I mean, with the hose, it has a, it has a motor and uh. But it's basically a wand and. Like a one-sided boom truck.
So, I mean, listen, how many gallons was that, that time? So that's something you have to physically almost get out of the truck and start it and you can't drive it down along the road and.
But you can't start it inside the truck and you gotta go out back and.
I have to get out back and reel the hose out, spray and. Sometimes I'm lucky enough to have a driver go with me and.
Yeah, that's where I'm getting at. You don't really wanna drive down long side of the road with a. Wand sticking out of the window, I suppose. It works good for spot.
It does, it works really well for spot.
And I've noticed some spots, I really have, you know. You're wondering why it's, why it's just dead here, you know, well, it must be part of the spraying program that there was something there that.
And secondary roads has mowed some areas this year and. Later in the summer next year, then I'll go back and treat the regrowth and hopefully we can knock out some of them.
Yeah, so you coordinate with them that some plots they mow and you want mowed, if you want them mowed, I guess. You would probably put a request into them to say, if you're gonna hit this, let me know, then we'll spray it, you know.
They're wanting to work on some sumac areas and there are some trouble areas of that, so.
So you get all the spots you get because that's as far as your money goes, or it's because that's what you think you need to do for the year?
Well, we appreciate it, try to keep a handle on it. If there's requests, questions for us, just get back to us. There a second? I'm sorry, I didn't hear it, I must have been talking. Have a motion and a second to approve uh the. Weed commissioner certification form as presented, all those in. And. Authorize the share the sign. All those in favor, say aye. Hold the same sign, motion carried, thank you, this, not this one, no way. Well, it's got holes punched in itself. Somebody has one, right? Sorry about that. All right, back to business, so Nathan is here for departmental, departmental update.
Yeah, so just had our last month's board meeting, but first of all, I'll kinda hit on some stuff we talked in the past. Our contractor, uh Bruce is ready to move in any day. We gotta get our docks out of the way yet, but that'll happen in the next. Most of the boats are out of the way in that corner, so that's gonna happen and start moving again fairly soon. So that, that, that's kinda one thing we've done, thought in the past and had any questions on, so. He, he's ready to roll whenever, probably more on our staff now.
Well, that's good news, yeah, I'd like to see progress there, a little, little, I hope it progresses a little quicker than the last round.
I hope he's figured out the process and is knows how to move faster, so if you get this done in his family manner now. So that, that was kinda one of our last. Past things, um another past thing, this going way back is. We're still in a debate with Core and insurance on trees along the river bank. One of you guys maybe actually helped me, you might have contacted the right person and made a contact to try to get that out of our lease.
This is a couple of leases from down river where. Third-party leases were able to contract with people that own above the property. So I wanna pass this to you, we can get together and talk about it. So we can maybe think about how we can derive, devise maybe a third-party lease with those property owners. They become responsible, so I will. You got better knowledge of state law than me.
One, one of you guys had talked to the core and they actually made the process, put it in a motion to see. They brought it up again to see if we can get out of that portion of the amount, so, so hopefully. Maybe it came from the right.
We can talk more later.
But that, that's good, so as of now, we're still kinda tongue tied with our insurance, the way of. We have to take everything as hazard. Twenty thirty-three, I think is when it ends. It'd be nice to get out of that or have something like this. There's definitely questions along there and I don't wanna, I'd like to try to be friendly with the neighbors and people all happy, but we all.
One of the neighbors says we stopped me and he's willing to sit down and he said he will go down and talk to all the other property owners. Of that area. But he was gonna start doing it, I told him to hold off until we actually get a tangible product, we can show that this is what we're presenting to the core. If it'll work before, cuz I don't want it to get all worked up again and then nothing happens. That's, that's some of the documentation that I was able to acquire. And so hopefully we can work something out.
We'll have to see how that shoreline. Is. Certain sections are allowed to do certain things, by the way, they have them. I knew they had such things somewhere and nobody has given me a. Anything to look at.
I don't know how to tell, cuz some of that's from states, but it's where Core has allowed an individual. To do a third-party lease of the property kind of thing, um where they're in charge of care and maintenance of that.
Yeah, and it makes only sense there cuz we got no access.
So I just didn't know how to apply the state law. As far as our laws are different or whatever, but that's what I've got so far. And I'd be willing to help you if you need it.
Yeah, yep, I appreciate it, so that, those are kinda the things of the past. Last board meeting was budget items and our budget. Um there were some big things we'll have in there, we'll let you guys discuss and. Bin out as they go, but I think that's the way our board kinda wants to just throw things at you and let you guys figure it out.
Priority list on those things they're throwing, or is it just a wish, wish or a want? Priority list on those things they're throwing or is it just a wish, wish or a want?
Well, um, there's a couple of things that are probably wish or want as in needing replacement or we think. Now's the time to replace a few items or trade in. Um, we, I can attach when we do the budget items, I can attach the, the list of maintenance items we have. There's a few things the board didn't give me a number on and we've discussed that they want me to put up for the new shop. In the budget, I don't know how I'm gonna do that yet, when I don't know some of the stuff, but I guess. Just know that's coming at you some way or another, at least, at least it opens discussion for you three to have for us, is what I think.
Have they been paying attention to the news with all the work property taxes and how it's gonna affect kind of the government and funding and all that stuff?
So. Yeah. Where this is going to go?
No, but that's where I think it was put on me and that's, I gotta figure out, I don't even know in the next month, how to put this, I have contacted. Just hoping it'll take Alex short period of time with engineering, cause he does do buildings, is my understanding, to give him something to go off of. If he gets some time before budget time, I'm hoping he can put something for it and show me.
Do you have ideas where for the you're looking for?
I do, I don't have a list, maybe, um, it's pretty much double our space now is what for the heated shop just.
So what is the utility building, is that seven forty by seventy two under one?
Our current one?
No, at the uh law center. We just put up that utility building. I mean, you might wanna stop and check the size of it.
Yeah, I've walked into that one, so I think our current one is thirty by sixty. Parker shop, so.
At Spruce Creek.
Yeah. Um, and I think one of the main pushes is. We are out of clients with how we store our chemical, like a mold on the ceiling, what else, these are issues.
So if we gotta do a shop.
But.
Would you dilactify the spaces Spruce Creek just because that's where the majority of the work is?
Well, that's, I think we would probably use maybe a building for storage, I don't think we actually use it as a shop anymore. We would make sure we store things that.
So something that wouldn't have to be climate controlled.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Try to keep it.
I would tend to agree, I mean, there's stuff that.
Something, until the core says we have to tear it down or something else, cause it hits.
Is that on core?
Cause I don't think we wanna spend, yeah, it's on core property, that's for, I don't wanna spend much on maintenance or upkeep to keep the building standing either. So that's things to go forward, so that was kind of our last board meeting. In a nutshell, we had a little discussion on that, um that was the main, the budget was the main thing going forward. Probably, always for those things to you guys, let you guys discuss and bring it back to us. It's kind of her back to the board, go from there, so. I believe in November, I have to have them in?
No, no, next week. First and November first. Connected November third.
We know what you're doing this afternoon.
Now I have a REAP assembly.
Yeah, no, cause we, that's, that was, we put everything.
She had it as the twentieth on the email I had.
Well, let's work on. So actually, John, John, or just me, John come in, uh, so we had, we got a work session. Little later on leases, but I wanted to touch base with John while you were here, I didn't wanna hold you up, so. Uh, we talked about the Pine Valley lease and there was a.
John's looked at it from two people's viewpoints now. I also contacted the state. John left, but I got the lawyer response that they can't tell me anything, cause I'm not their client.
So you wanna join us, John, or you wanna sit right there, or how would you like to?
Sure, yeah, absolutely be part of it. Wherever you'd like me.
Please note that the EXO files are due back no later than Wednesday, November first. That's okay.
I think the twentieth date was the compensation board.
Oh, maybe I read wrong.
So, um, I guess we talked about some of the terms in the lease and we had some, maybe some liability issues to know that we were covered and whatnot and.
Yeah. Number five, you had questions on Mike?
I did.
Some people wrote some wording I didn't really understand, so I took it to John.
I still don't understand that either.
Well, it's a long way of saying. You're liable as if the property was your own. So ordinarily, we have insurance against um accidents, um. People hurting themselves, people being negligent, that sort of thing, and that's what indemnification uh section number five does, it simply says. It's state property, we're gonna let the county use it, in exchange for doing that, um if. We get sued, you guys are going to indemnify or, or uh assume the risk. And so we just make, make sure that we get that uh insured over. I don't see anything, any, anything unusual in section five, it's. Probably what I would ask for if we had county property that we're allowing someone else to use. I would say you're using it, you're controlling it, uh we don't have any control over it, so in exchange for your supervision, you're gonna assume the risk. And I guess my question is. Are we really using it, or are we just doing, taking care of it? In trade for them letting us use some of their equipment, kind of thing, and is it worth it, you know?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, that is pretty much what we're doing, we're, we're doing a little man management on it. It's part of our six hundred acre parcel, I mean, so it kind of fits into our, our lane.
I mean, I don't have an issue with it, if it, if it's a value to us, some, as some, some way that we can trade off, but again, what is it costing us to do that?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what the insurance, if it just falls under our blanket policy with everything else, um. I think time wise and maintenance wise, it's not costing our department.
Okay, so we don't have a number for insurance either, correct? We never got that number?
Nope, I sent Jennifer an email and never received anything back on that, I thought, I don't.
Area truly where like the public through it gets into?
It's so. Little background, these twenty acres has endangered a couple of big species they found on it. Um, state got federal money to purchase it, to protect it. The state had the county twenty five or thirty years ago, just take, make it part of Pine Valley and take care of it. It's way in the back edge, no access, last year willing to walk a couple of miles pretty much. To get there, so I don't think people are getting there very often, for one. The main reason that it's public land is just protect those species and try to maintain that.
I guess, you know, really, my only really concern was a liability issue, you're saying, you know. If somebody goes deer hunting on there and somebody has an accident, if something happens, then, then, then different things arise.
Yeah.
So I would like to know that we are covered for sure and if we have to, we'll see Jennifer, I would like to know what it's costing.
Yeah, I could do that.
Connected to Pine Valley, correct?
It is already part of our.
Okay, it was just an additional twenty acres.
Yeah.
So I guess I'm looking at our insurance policy as an example, Buzzard Ridge Wildlife Area. Um, there's an eleven thousand five hundred and forty six dollar value on it. Um, is there a, a building or anything?
Buzzard Ridge?
Buzzard Ridge Wildlife Area, so it's in twenty of eighty five one, as an example, if you use that. We pay twenty three dollars for that.
Yeah.
So I, I guess.
It's probably minimum.
So we paid twenty three dollars for what?
Well, I don't.
So are we covered up to two? Yeah, so we are, we covered up to two million dollars in liability or whatever it is, you know, if you, you, you. You, I think one area that we did have somebody get shot on.
So this is pretty much been a like at least that we've uh just, the, there hasn't really been any changes that you know of in.
This is, reads about the exact same as the past one, so. Actually. I had them take out a few things, said I didn't wanna have to pay the compensation the way they had it ordered.
Yeah.
So. Before, but other than that, it reads about identical as the former lease. And that, the hunting thing was my question to the DNR and I thought I'd get an answer on that portion, cause the way I read it is. Our workers or anybody, but it doesn't say anything about hunting or recreation and there's like, hmm, maybe they're covering that, but.
Okay, I guess, you know, we're gonna talk about the leases in the work session, but. I, I would ask you to get a answer from Jennifer to say.
Jennifer again.
I mean, if you think. The wording's fine, John, that we don't have to change it.
She should be here in a little bit.
Yeah.
What's that? Oh, she's coming for the work session.
He's got about twenty things in mind right now, I guess.
Yes.
So.
Okay. I'm sorry to bother you, John, so early, I mean, are you coming back for the work session?
I am, um, and we're, the typical thing about leases, the only. Only lease that, if you want me to look at something advanced, maybe uh from Luann, I've looked at the ACAP, the old lease we did three years ago. Yep, that's the only one I've looked at. But um, we can cover the work session too. I don't wanna pick your stuff, Mike.
No, you bring it back, I trust you.
Alright, uh, ten thirty then?
Yes.
Thank you.
Highlight, you can scribble on, you can do it everyone. Alright, anything else, Nathan?
I don't have anything else, I guess I've gotta go work on a budget. Totally wrong.
Oh, you've got a week.
Yeah, that's, that'd be good.
After, no, after November first, budget is done.
We didn't change much, um, that's the simple, I think. Hopefully. Alright.
We've changed the.
Appreciate it. Yeah, I noticed that, I've done.
Trying to.
Thanks, thanks, guy, I hear you, man. Alright, right on time, Marty, uh, our Jackson County Mason Supervisor, good morning.
Okay. I can run a call so we can get him done before the work session, so Marty.
Morning. You wanna hold the lead?
Good morning. But you're gonna have to remind me what this is for, I don't know when we started this.
It's for the cement, there was a complaint um in front of the senior center, there's like a one or two inch get lip.
It's like, it's like an inch and a half. It's the approach to the front door of the senior citizen building. Four foot wide, eight foot long, is what I would.
That's not something that we can do?
Yeah, but the thing of it is, is if we have to buy that concrete, it costs like three hundred dollars a yard because it's so small. Where these guys can form it and get cement from another job to pour it. And then it's only a hundred and.
This is minimum, minimum home.
Three yards.
Yes.
Okay, so right now there's a hundred fifty dollar difference in that, so.
Yeah.
Four by eight is a yard.
Whatever you want.
I, I would open and then we can decide, I guess, yeah.
Just so you know, I called four people, but I only got two bids.
So this first bid is from Coswell Construction. He has, is it removed two sections of front walk approximately five by eight. Um, they're gonna pour back a six inch. Concrete and high bars, uh, his bid is for a thousand dollars. This next, this little bit is from. TM Flatwork?
That includes the concrete and the rebar and whatever, there was no add-ons.
No, it says pour back six inches thick and, and we'll add in the tie. So this is from TM Flatworks. Tear out the existing sixty three square foot handicap ramp and replace it with. But the four inch minimum depth. So this is for four inch and making everything comply with ADA. Um, he is, his bid is for one thousand and eight dollars, okay, thank you. Sure, so a thousand, a thousand dollars for a six inch and a thousand and eight for a minimum four inch gap.
I would go with the six inch.
Um, I guess. Not, other than not being cheaper, I would go with six inch two, and I mean, sidewalk is not usually six inch, but I guess you could be driving a drop over or gone too.
I uh, I've never seen it and I don't plow over top of it, I do put the blade up there every once in a while to drag it back.
I mean, if we think that that's feasible and not do it in house. That's the next place.
Men alone for what we paid for our other cement that we just did is gonna be five hundred.
Four by eight section B.
Half.
Half yard.
Well, six inches thick.
Nine by nine.
My only, my only requirement would be is the fact that because this is the main entrance for the senior center. I don't want it tore out and then it sits for three weeks while they go get all their other jobs up. I would like that to be the last job they gotta do before they call the cement truck and come in and fill it in first, so it maybe is down. Three or four days versus, um. I know I saw somebody, my neighbor had some sidewalks tore out and they sent it for almost two and a half, three weeks before they were reported. Um, with the activity going on down there and some of the limited. Uh, mobility that those people have, it'd be nice to get this going as best we can. So that's my one re, my one ask is, that'd be the last thing they tear out before they call the cement and have that be the first report.
If you accept the bid, I'll make sure that they do that, that when they, the day they tear it out. Have it poured back that day, cause I would think something that's small could easily be tore out and poured in one day.
And we can motion this because it's not listed on the agenda or, you know. I make a motion, go the lowest bidder.
I guess, my only question is, is this not something to do in-house?
Well, the only thing is, how do you tear it out and jackhammer it out and I have no equipment to do that.
Yeah, here's my issue, well, you got a script over, but.
Yeah, but I can't, I can't get that out of there.
Problem is, I mean, the issue is, if, if one is gonna do it, he's gonna need help or something, it's. If a secondary road's helping again, then it's a charge and a charge.
I was thinking for motion for the lowest then.
Have a motion in a second to approve the low bid for the concrete repair um from Coswell.
Yes.
For one thousand dollars as presented, all those in favor say aye.
I guess the second thing with that, I would like him to maybe match up what we got, so. It's probably a four inch. There, you don't need to dig down further than what's.
Well, the thicker the better, and if it's cheaper, why not?
Yeah, I would go deeper, yeah.
I would.
Yeah, I would.
Yeah.
If he quoted six inch, I would do the six inch.
Yeah, other, otherwise we're.
It's gonna be level on top, but if it's deeper, that's fine, cause if we ever gotta replace the rest, we'll probably, yeah.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye. I oppose, same sign? What's your carry?
Couple of things, the voice machine at the care facility was delivered and installed the next day. You want, was wanting me to look into putting the door into that metal stall there. The opening is eighty six inches wide and ninety two and a half inches tall. So you tell me what kind of door you think you want in there, if you want a garage door or a double door, and then I will get a price on that for you. So that.
So again, I'm looking for a recommendation from you. I personally would like a door, I don't care if it's a double door, I don't care if it's a six foot. Garage, garage door, if it works.
Okay.
Just so that I can drive, I can just drive something in there.
How wide is it?
Uh, eighty six inches. Would be the widest that, that would be the widest the rough opening could be. I just don't wanna. I just don't wanna, I'd like to.
When you look at doors, there's standard doors and there's special order doors.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if eighty-six inches would be a standard.
No, but you'd get a seven foot or eight foot, eight foot, could you get an eight foot door in there? No.
I would touch base with the, the door guy here, Makoguna.
Like I say, we can frame it if we need to frame it to make it a little bit.
I mean, even if it's a six foot wide door.
Yeah.
Right.
Or even if you can go. Purchase a door, um, you know.
Well, depends what, you know, you get a.
If you get a roll top door, and if you get a double door without a center post or removable center post. So you're not limited to this much to get in.
Right, that's, that's what I have to say.
I think you only really need a garage door on it, like a roll up door.
The thing is, I just don't know if we have enough time. That is my question, you know, they make, I know they make low clearance and stuff like that, but it's only.
Six foot would be six times two, seventy-two? So, and what'd you say for height?
Uh, ninety-seven and a half.
Yeah, well, you'd have plenty, cause they only take, you only need a foot for clearance for the rail.
So, all right, I will get a price on a garage door. Do you want, want it insulated? Cause the rest of the room is insulated.
I would say yes.
Okay.
So that's something you could purchase at a.
Minarge or somewhere like that.
I was gonna say, I know at the fairgrounds, at that volunteer hall on the far end.
Few jits.
Yeah. We put in, like, the service door, the double service door, so that we could get pallets of.
You can put a double.
But is it insulated?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I just wanted, before I went research today, I wanted to know what you want, but I can do both.
Research both and kind of.
Even if we find the barn door, just slide a barn door.
That ain't gonna be insulated though.
Well, it's not gonna seal either. I, I would get a roll up, either roll up door or a double door.
Okay, I will do that. So, I got a groundhog problem up there.
I didn't notice that in my picture.
And uh. They're in bullshits, they're under, they're undermining the concrete under the thirty thousand gallon water tank. And I've tried trapping them, I've tried several other options, and I, and having no luck with it. With it, so I'm looking for some direction there, if you want me to. I thought I had a couple, uh, are they cono traps?
Cono bear traps?
I thought I had a couple then personally, but I couldn't find them.
Tell yourself to talk to somebody.
Okay. Okay, I, cause uh, I did get the possum, but I didn't get the groundhog. And if I did get the groundhog, he isn't visible. Uh, but I go up there and shove the dirt back in the hole, and then a couple of days later, I go back up there and the hole's dug out, so I'm.
Google it.
Uh, yeah. I did.
I mean, that's, I'll tell you what, there's information on that.
Well, what I did is I did Google it uh, to find out what they eat. And I went to Tyson's and I bought some chicken food that had carrots, peas and stuff like that, and then we made it. And fed it to him and they ate it, but it didn't, didn't help him. Killed the possum, but it didn't kill the, the groundhog. So then one day I went up there, cause one day I went up there and he was outside just lollygagging. So the next day I went back up there with the rifle and never come out, never seen him. So I sat there for a couple of hours, he never come out, so I left.
I want to see you sitting up in the trail over there looking like Bill Murray from Caddyshack, they're gonna go for it, and blow up a dynamite.
Same, same mentality. Um, but we need to do something because. There's, there's four, four tunnels and under the water tank. And there's one outside to the machine shed, and then you go inside and he's got one on the backside.
So I would do some investigating and talk it over with some individuals, and if you need, we need to get an exterminator or something, we.
It's something we have to, I will, I will talk to. All right, all right. Um. Well, we're gonna cut the trees down next week up there. Um. Took the saw to get it tuned up, um.
You should uh, touch base with the grinder in case he's in the area too.
Give me his name.
I will send it to you. Well, his name is B E H N. Kenny?
Kenny?
Ken, yeah.
Ken?
I think it's B E H N, dump grinding.
Okay.
I sent you his number when.
Yeah, I might have it, Mike. I, I just didn't remember his name, cause he does.
I mean, he's done the other ones out there, ain't he?
Right, yeah.
Reasonable and.
He does a good job too. Um. I got a call from. Is her name Kimberly, Kimberly down at the senior citizen building? Okay, got a call from her, the furnace wasn't working. So I went down there and it wasn't working back where the, the, the uh. They make the quilts, so I went in there, lit the lid up, and it was shut off. So I did turn it back on, get it working for her. Um.
Did you actually, actually show her that with that switcher or something?
I have never been down there when that girl's down there. I don't know when she's there.
Have you informed anybody down there what was, what it was?
Yeah, well, I told her that. I called her and said that the, the, the door, the door's on the bottom. And the furnace was shut off.
Okay.
And she said she didn't know who shut off. Uh, I was leaving the parking lot with the, my little van and the lower ball joint fell off. The tire fell off, so I had to call Bridgeport, I didn't have to, I called Bridgeport, they come and got it, took it to C and R. Um. And they put a new bolt joint on. I just got it back this morning.
They covered it?
Uh-huh.
They covered it, you mean?
What do you mean covered it?
It's been fixed it.
They fixed it.
They took it to C and R.
Yeah, uh.
I didn't know.
Bridgeport took it to C and R and C and R fixed it, Randy did.
Yeah.
And he was, I think he, it took him about a week or so, he, I think one of his guys takes off and goes out to somebody farm or something, so he was shorthanded, I was going. Um, furnace builders over at the Annir, we changed the thermos that. Um, on the garage, on the south side of the garage, I'm gonna replace two windows, they're just. The old six pane windows and the mutton bars are all ro- rotted out of it, so I'm gonna see if I can get some vinyl ones. Uh, to replace them with. Because uh.
In the garage, you mean?
In the garage, yes, yes. Um, again, fix the sheriff's han- the shower handle and the sheriff's. The handle to the shower in the sheriff's office. And then the fire marshal was in there and he's got three or four things we need to do, plug some holes from one wall to the other where the wires go through.
Uh, Andrew, and they were asking if you do that, and you know, Brent's here too, if you want, but. Moving boxes is part of the maintenance department?
I think it, and I'm not for sure, but Andrew told me he was gonna take care of most of that, that I, I think all's what I'm gonna do is fix the holes in the walls. All right?
Is that a coughing thing you mean?
Pardon me?
Is that a cough?
Probably the fire, fire safe cock.
Yeah.
That the fire can't shoot.
Okay, we built the little wall with the door in, the entryway. And the air conditioner's here, but the only plug-in was here, so we had to drill a hole through the wall. And we had to be a big hole to get the plug through it, and I gotta plug that.
Okay.
All right?
So is there mortar involved also, I mean, or is it just a matter of coughing?
I'm, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna spray foam it full and then mud it smooth, so it looks like it's. It was done.
It's just kinda like a fire prevention, so it can't pass through one wall into another wall.
Right, that's quickly, yeah.
Yeah, but, but I think Andrew's gonna take care of most of that, he told me.
I just saw the email and it listed, he goes, here's the fire marshal's report. Good, good maintenance, take, take care of these things, and most of it was like move, move boxes from here. And, and I'm just like, really, you know, so I'm glad to see it was kinda delineated out or whatever.
Um. Had the service one, come every year, we have to put new kits in the boiler, we had that done. Um. And I also had him line a date up to do the one up at the care facility. And then Jared wants him to do some other work. I don't. Were you guys on board when we ordered the new uni van up there about a year and a half or two years ago?
No, we were only there for like nine months.
Okay, well, it still isn't here. And he's gonna double check on it to see where it's at, and then he was gonna get back to me.
Do you get, what's that for?
Uh, the one room, uh, the coil was leaking and it was cheaper, you couldn't get the coil, so we just bought a whole unit.
Oh, the air conditioner.
Yeah, like that, only it's a newer style.
How much is that?
Uh, I can't remember. You okayed it. I, you know, that's been so long ago, I don't know.
I remember seeing some when we first got aboard.
Yeah.
Or it was talked about anyhow.
Yeah, yeah, it was ordered, we got two beds, it was ordered.
Yeah.
But it's, they said what was like three to six months to get it here, but it's been. Third, yeah, nine or ten, something like that. And that's about it.
It was like January, February, March.
Yeah, and I think I remember opening it, I think one was. Yeah, yeah.
Anything else?
No.
No, thanks.
All right, have a good week.
All right, check out them doors, we'll let us know sooner than later.
I will.
Yeah. I'll get it today. Thanks. Well, we had a little extra time before our work session, Brent, for your update, and you gotta do update, you wanna throw at us?
And it'll be brief.
So Brent Kilburg is here with the, is our Jackson County Sheriff.
So some of this is old news already, and I apologize for not being able to get in sooner with other priorities popping up. They had time sensitive there to get to. Uh, but uh, as y'all probably already know, Sergeant Gruber has resigned from the sheriff's office, he took the chief of police position in Preston. So we're running a little shorthanded, may have a little more overtime trying to cover his. Open vacancies on the shift and we're down the road, we're looking at doing the schedule different. Um, to provide more consistent coverage throughout the schedule, so, and we're just letting you know, we're a little shorthanded right now. Our part timer that uh. Is interested in full time, couldn't take the position at the time due to a, a family timing issue. Um, so he declined it uh, for the time being, till he gets that kinda resolved. Um, so we're in the process of uh, going, creating another civil service list, and that got delayed a little bit too due to some. Uh, timing things with them, but we're in the process of doing that, so, anyway. Um, you guys may already be aware, I'm not sure if John Hanson would have briefed you on it, we had a burglary to the jail site a few weeks ago. So we, uh, in conjunction with Makoka PD, got on that right away that day and uh. Had that solved and had the equipment back within twenty-four hours of that happening, so, just letting you know.
Wasn't nothing, it was like a hard hat and.
No, it was more stuff than that.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, there's probably thousand foot of heavy extension cords. Um, there's some personal items in there, um.
They mentioned a lot of them, and they said it wasn't any, any tools or it was like some weird stuff.
It wasn't many tools, there was some tools, uh, but yeah, the cords, even if you just take those heavy hundred foot extension cords and add them up, and that's a thousand foot of them.
Mm-hmm.
So anyway, um, so we got on that and got that solved fairly quickly, uh. And now they're securing the jail better because of that, so, which was good anyway. We do have a big case probably involving the eight different agencies, um, that I'm not, I was gonna speak about, but we're gonna hold off on that, uh. Cause it's still ongoing, so I'm not waiting on that. Um. But other than that, I guess that's, so that kinda shortens up my uh, my update, so. That's about where we're at, thanks.
Well, we appreciate your update.
One question for you, um, just a bit ago, Julie Furness here and Brendan Zymick made an opioid request for some Pelican boxes. To put, what, naloxone, what is it?
Narcan.
Narcan, and it, um. Bellevue and Sebula opt to go with a little pot that they can wear on their vest or whatever. Uh, my question is, part of the justification for the Pelican boxes is for temperature control. Stored in your trunk, it's not temperature controlled, those boxes aren't temperature. They, that's not what they do, that's more of a protection, so you can throw the Narcan down the stair, won't break, but Emily's gonna test in the ambulances. For those boxes, they gotta open the ambulance up in the, in the heated garage to keep it climate controlled, so.
Mm-hmm.
If we could get the pouches. Could you throw them into glove box or something where it's inside the passenger compartment that is more temperature related? Or is there a spot on your belt or your vest or whatever?
Is this a pouch they're putting on their vest?
Yes.
Okay. In my opinion, and I'm not trying to steer anybody's operations, you know, get it off track, but um. Ops are people too, and they're gonna take the, the route of least resistance, so many times that Narcan stays in those squads and it's cold over winter. And because most time you don't think of it or you, you don't drag it in and out of your house, you know, at the end of the day, end your shift. So yeah, um, probably having it on your person is probably a better spot for it, because then it will go in the heated house with you and doesn't stay out in the car. Um.
It just seems like these boxes are, you, you got, you got enough stuff in that car.
Twelve by twelve, by six or eight or whatever, I mean, for a little thing in Narcan. They're in every car in the.
I mean, cause going forward, we were told that you wanted these boxes also.
You wanted on the city ass port, and then the sheriff's department jumped on and wondered it too.
So without talking to Chief Davity Crocker, I know he's the one that's been working with Julia Fern on the opioid stuff. Um, he's off today, so I don't wanna misspeak for whatever his plan was, and like I said, I'm not trying to derail anything either. Um, so I don't know, maybe they have a plan for that, I don't know. Um, but.
I'm just worried because their big thing is they're saying temperature controlled, and I know that the boxes do not maintain the temperature.
So I would get, I would say just talk it over with your personnel and whoever, cause Julie's coming back, the, the request wasn't signed anyway, so it's gonna come back, since she's gonna talk it over with you and your personnel, so.
And it kinda sounds like she has like free funding for.
The pouches.
The pouches.
Oh, okay.
First, I mean, yeah, free, I mean, they get them.
She made a request to the state, they sent it to her.
Yeah, I'm assuming the, part of the thinking on the Pelican boxes was the security of it, you know, like a, a drug box on an ambulance or a fire truck or whatever. Um, I'm assuming. Um, but yes, uh.
Doesn't say that.
That stuff's supposed to be temperature controlled, you know.
Well, and then when, under the justification, they use H one under schedule B. And that is more for accessibility of Narcan for first responders, things like that, but it doesn't say anything about temperature regulation. And if you're using that as your primary justification, that doesn't match up with that, but makes it more of a, if she gets audited, it don't jive and you shouldn't spend that money on it.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Yeah, so I, like you guys are talking, I'm assuming then the justification is, okay, so it's in this Pelican box, you know, that Pelican box has been moving in and out of your house every day, so it doesn't stay out in the car and things and stuff, so. You know, if you can put that and any other stuff that you need in there that needs to be temperature controlled, that's better.
Touch base with them or whatever, cause Julie will be talking with you because we, we tabled it.
Okay.
Get better understanding for it, see if there's a better solution.
Okay.
All right?
Yep, and as far as, I don't know about the email, if Andrew sent you an email about uh, with Marty with uh. Fire prevention or whatever the fire code, I mean.
Well, it just, we get, we get all the work orders.
Yeah.
And I think there was a work order, and it said, here's the fire chief's fire marshal's report. Hey, can maintenance fix the discrepancies? And as I read the discrepancies, which were in red, it was like, there's boxes in front of this, there's, move the, check the fire hy- or fire extinguisher, and I'm like.
Yeah, I had already delegated that to Andrew, he already took care of the boxes the next day. The fire extinguisher sitting on the floor was because that company that inspects them. Brought us spares while ours were in getting inspected, I guess, so they were still sitting there waiting for the company to come back and retrieve their spares that they had sent there, so, and.
You know, so, yeah, that was my only point, I was just like, okay. Hopefully it doesn't affect maintenance and move boxes or whatever.
Well, we appreciate it, Brent, we know you're busy and um, appreciate the reporting. Yeah, but enjoyed the beautiful fall day.
Yeah, or it gets, that's what we do.
Yeah.
You guys too.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, so on my agenda. It's pretty much everything crossed off. Pretty little work session, we need to discuss our leases a little bit from one to the other, and if we can, maybe. Convince them to the point that they're all kinda. The same or whatnot, so.
Limestone Bluff, so the big news I got is uh, the executive director Stephanie S- uh, Seggers submitted her resignation, she accepted a full-time job in a. Uh, the Makoka area yard experience, so they are in the process of trying to figure out what they're gonna do from here. And uh, they asked. Um, Stephanie has probably about a half a mini van full of totes that. Go to the limestone bluff executive director. And would it be possible if we had a room, we could stick them in while they get the new director hired? Before they can get transported. Somewhere else, just because of the fact that they were like, the, the other person was like over Sea Rapids somewhere, and. They're hauling them all over, and right now they're sitting down in Stephanie's house.
Do they have to be climate controlled? Do they have to be in a climate control?
I suppose they're riding around their van, probably not.
No.
Right now, they're in the house. Point is, that room's empty now, the, the file cabinets are gone, so. I mean, again, you have to go through one door to get into the door, but that room's empty, so.
Well, I'm just saying, I didn't know if there was something here, just so.
Well, there's some lumber in there, but that probably can be.
I'm just thinking easy convenience, cause they're just down the street, I didn't know if we had a place to store five or six toads or something.
So Limestone Bluff doesn't have an office, so?
No.
Oh.
She is working out her house.
Oh, okay, okay. Uh, you know what, if it's short term, with your approval, we'll find a place for it.
Okay.
I think we.
So we can do like a three month storage for them.
I mean, we can set them into, we can set them in a common area up there.
No, we cannot.
We can set them in the common area.
Yeah, we'll be taking care of them shortly.
No, that, that's just something they asked, and, and they were sitting, and I was like, I can check and see if we got us paid.
I mean, honestly, you could probably even put them, anything confidential.
To my house, I don't know, she, she just like, I, see, they were talking, they got it, she goes, what's gonna happen with the toads and stuff? And I'm like, about how much are you talking, she goes, I don't know, it'd fill about half a mini van, and and I was just like, just for, cause they were trying to figure out how to get it to Cedar Rapids and all this, and I'm just like, it's literally two blocks down the street, you know?
Yeah, I, you know what, we'll find a place.
Okay.
I'm, I'm trying to get a staging area for the extension office also, so you know what, we'll figure it out, never get ahold of them.
Okay. Then we're gonna take care of them, and like I say, as soon as I hire somebody, um, I don't know, the personnel committee is meeting, um, but, uh, there's a couple of prospects on the line already, so, but useful ones.
Put them back in the wall, I burn.
Yeah, there's a lot of room up there and that, or.
Put them right inside the door.
Yeah, there you go. Right next to the door, you just come right in and grab them all.
All right, any other bills before the board? Have a motion in a second to adjourn, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both expected.
Yeah.